Five thirty-one P M. We'll call the Mini Board. And our Chief of Police, if he'll lead us in a prayer. And the pledger believes that the Blight, John, the Blight?
Yes, sir.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with a humble heart, Lord. We we come to you seeking your will in all that we do, Lord. We just ask your guidance, your direction, your presence as we continue to look to do what is your will, Lord. And just let all the things that are of us just get cast away and we just continue to seek you and and do your will in all that we do. Thank you for the friendship. Thank you for the family. Thank you for the fellowship, but most of all, thank you for your son, Jesus, and in his name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I thank you, sir. We'll go to our open floor.
And Mayor, I did not have anyone sign up.
Okay. Then. Go to special presentations and announcements, and at that time I'll turn it over to our City Manager.
Okay, and I would like to call Vince up. Vince, yes, please get around the corner. Outgoing Commissioner Mayor Prochan, and he has had four years of service and want to face everybody here. He's had four years of dedicated service and you guys will soon find out it really is a sacrifice because he takes time away from his family. He takes time, you know, he's got two young kids and, you know, they've got games and everything and so, you know, he's really dedicated a lot of the time. I will say just from my perspective, I've only been here two and a half years, but when I was interviewing for the position, he he was the one that explained to me what lifers were in in Breckenridge and I would never be a lifer. But but that that was okay. But anyway, so we just want to present to you this proclamation for your four years of service. Really appreciate you being on the Commissioners, City Commission and dedicating that time and representing the citizens. And this is just a small token of appreciation for the proclamations and.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You do get to take your. We know how valuable that is. We're gonna keep the whole.
All right, turn it over to the to the City Secretary to swear an elected official from the May third, two thousand twenty-five general.
All right, I'm gonna call it Junior Fernandez. I love it, Junior. So we're gonna start. What I'm gonna do is I'm going to read the statement of officer out for you first, and I'd like for you to raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which you were elected or as a reward to secure your appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. Do you? Okay. Now, if you'll just repeat after me. I state your name.
I do your name.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City Commissioner.
Of City Commissioner.
Of the city of Breckenridge.
Of the city of Breckenridge.
And of the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, or.
Defend.
Defend, sorry.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Your signature here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna bring up Paul from State District, Mayor. All right, thank you. I'm gonna start out and I'm gonna read the statement of officer and some part of him afterwards, okay? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, promised any public office or appointments for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which you were elected or as a reward to secure your appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God.
I do.
All right. Now, if you'll just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paul Huntington, Jr.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duty.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City Commissioner.
Of City Commissioner.
Of the city of Breckenridge.
City of Breckenridge.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. And right also. All right, we know our official. Congratulations. If you want to have a seat, I'll put your.
We'll go down to the staff report and I'll turn it back over to the City Manager.
Um, we've got our Public Works Director who is going to present our Employee of the Month. King of Burns, if you can come out with comments.
I promise. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, yeah, so our department, as probably everybody knows, whether it's the water treatment plant, wastewater plant, collections, or district crew, we're we're twenty-four seven, most of the time. We've got really hard work and crew and it takes a lot to stand out from the crowd. This month, Mr. Thomas Swanson, he's a crew member. He was critical this month in helping us rewrite flow from Station Two and keep our sewer moving. And he he's worked tirelessly to to keep that thing running. And Thomas, since I've been here, man, you helped me many times just in this past month. You adapt well to change priorities. You're about as dependable as they come and best of all, you perform your duties with an outstanding attitude. So congratulations.
We'll go back to the City Manager.
Okay, so one more presentation we're gonna do. This will be difficult to do. Lobbying for Wes Harrison. If you'll come forward, please.
I didn't hear that till now.
So we had, unfortunately, he has submitted his resignation after thirty-one proud years of service to the city of Breckenridge. I will tell you, for me personally coming on board, you have been a staple for the Public Services Department. That is a department I didn't have to worry about. You took on extra duties and you've always gone above and beyond the call of duty and exemplar exemplified the values, striving for excellence, well, everything, bold, responsible, striving for excellence, compassionate, and knowledgeable. And I think you ran a tough ship, a tight ship, and that's why, you know, everything looked so great over there. And we have a great park system. I think most people will agree. And we have, you know, thanks to the Commissioners, we have invested more money in that. And you really shepherded a lot of those projects. It was about seven hundred thousand dollars of projects that he really was instrumental in bringing across the goal line. So on behalf of staff and Commissioners, I just wanna thank you for your years of service and recognize you and appreciate you.
Thank you. One day I might be there. One thing I like to say about Stacy, well, I don't know how many years Frontier Days has been going on. I lost track over the years. Now, I was. How many?
He knows.
Anyway.
He's a legend.
Yeah, anyway. A lot of it would have never got done without Stacy, whatever anything, you know, him and I worked together with other so many years on it. And we could not have done it without him.
That's right.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So at the same time, what I did want to do was also, we did advertise the position and we have gotten a great candidate on board. So I wanted to introduce him to you, Taylor Hardy. You have big shoes to fill, but I'm really excited to bring him on board. Yesterday was his first day. He's already jumped in. There's, you know, a lot of things going on. Of course, we just opened a pool. So there's there's a lot of pool going on. He'll be getting certified in that. We do have people on board in our departments that are certified. Stacy, of course, was as well. He'll be doing that, but really excited to welcome him to the team. He'll be a great addition.
Very good.
A couple of other updates I just wanted to give you. Citizens Academy is ongoing. The last one we had, we have it the second Monday of each month. It was Fire Department and we were Fire Department and we were at Parks for the Public Services as well. And the next one will be on Development Services and Code Enforcement. And that'll be June sixteenth, I believe, I'm thinking the calendar. So that's going well. We still have pretty good attendance. We were gonna welcome twenty, you know, have room for up to twenty-five. I think we had about twenty nineteen start and I think we still have, you know, about fifteen that are still attending. So really, and and I, you know, what I will say, I mean, Paul was is is attending that. So, you know, we've got another lady that is looking at a position within the city. You know, she's gotta go through that process. I don't know. But I mean, so they're learning. People are learning about the city and that's really the goal. And Taylor, yeah, Taylor, that's right, Taylor's there as well. So it's really, I I think it's doing what it was meant to do. So we're excited about that. We did have, also wanted to let you know, as we are preparing for budget, we're always going back to the strategic plan. You know, we did it internally. We've done and come to you on on those updates, what staff preferences were and how we're trying to prioritize going forward. And we had an open house. Unfortunately, it was not as well as intended as the first one that we had. But we had everybody here. We had our engineers here talking about, you can see the one pagers there, the projects that are in the process right now with the Texas Water Development Board for our water wastewater treatment plants and our water and wastewater lines and the stations. We also had, you'll see in the near, we had updates on tech stops projects inside the city and those were given out. We have updates on our strategic plan and where we've been, the progress we've made and where we're working and going, trying to see if these are still the priorities for everybody. We had our zoning information there as we talked about here. We've done the comprehensive development plan update. And the only thing that is pretty much complete along, you know, the parks, plan, update, part of that. And the only thing that we're lacking is updating the zoning ordinance. And so we wanted to go out to the public. There's not really, it's really. There's not really substantive changes, but we presented that consultants were here and we presented what that future land use plan looks like. And just as a reminder, so for instance, we're changing with the known pleasure right now on red, our zoning for residents is R one, R two, R three, and R four. And so really, the way it's laid out is a little bit confusing. We're gonna change that to be single family and it will then have the square footage of the lot. So five thousand, it's seven point five fifteen. So it's just a little bit clearer, more clear. And also how it's listed in the zoning ordinance. It's, if you've ever read through our zoning ordinance, it is confusing. It's confusing for a lot of people anyway. But it was in one, for R four, it will say, well, everything in one, two, and three, and then this. And then so you have to go back to one and two and three, you know, see what is there. So we're gonna lay it out a lot more succinctly. And in each category, it will be clearly marked what is in that category and allowed and it'll be clearly fine. So we're excited about that. The next step for that will be taking it to the P and Z, which we've already been talking with them about. And and then, of course, it will come to you all. And, you know, a public, a horrible public hearing, but we did want to say that when citizens will let them know. We're following up just like we did for the last two years, the open house with a survey. And we're getting feedback on the survey. And really, the survey is, we know there's things we need to work on. Anybody who live in Breckenridge, we know there there's things to work on. We have made progress. There's still a lot of progress that we need to make. And so really, what we want to find out is information from the citizens, are these still your priorities? I mean, our main goals are invest in our infrastructure, invest in our employees, promote economic development and tourism, unify Breckenridge, and promote transparency and communication. And there's a lot that falls under those five main categories. And we want to see, are we still on track? The other part of that is an individual survey on the splash pad. We do have that on the agenda tonight, and I'll talk more about that. But we did want to get specific feedback. And we did that before on the splash pad. We did this before and see what if that's something that people desire here. And that's pretty much it for the City Manager for the upcoming events.
So on upcoming events, June is a pretty slow month with the summer. Everybody kind of out enjoying summer. So we do have the Chamber of Commerce is doing the Boomtown Summer Sale on this weekend. So everybody go out and do some shop local and. Anybody here in Breckenridge, I'm sure there's a lot of sales going on. If you look it on Facebook, you'll see a lot of those. We also have, just like every month, full pickup is on the third Thursday of the month. Residents are given one free large item pickup. They just place the items on their on the street corner and our Public Services will pick that up. They do have to be on the list for that and you have to be on the list by the Friday prior to. So you can call, residents can call up to city offices and be on the list. We have it through Text My Gov. It's on the website. There's multiple ways that people can sign up for that. So that is a service that's offered for people to help get rid of junk. And yeah, that's the events for June.
Ladies, we'll go to our consent and this agenda. We'll ask the Commissioner if that would fit six, seven, and eight, and we'll have a motion on that.
It's approval of the consent agendas items six through eight as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor? All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to the public public hearing and then we'll open the public hearing at five fifty-one P M. Conduct a public hearing on request, the special goose permit eleven oh three North Harvey for the placement of a tiny house. This lot is on R four, General Dwelling District.
And Mayor, there are no speakers for that.
All right. Then we will close it at five fifty-two at this time, then. We'll go to our action items, item ten, discussion, any necessary action regarding a request for a specific use permit, eleven oh three North Harvey, to allow the placement of a tiny house.
So Mayor and Commissioners, what you're looking at here is property is four point five acres. It includes lot, each lot forty of twenty and all of lots twenty-one and twenty-two in the block ten. The tiny home will actually, here's the visual, the tiny home will actually sit on lot twenty. And you'll see underneath what we've drawn in there, a small white rectangle. There used to be a mobile home on that. The mobile home is no longer there. So this will be a primary residence. And this is covered in section twenty-two of our ordinance. It does meet, there is specific criteria that does have to be met for a tiny home. It does meet the criteria. The P and Z consider this item. The last Monday, not yesterday, we get four, and they are recommending approval for the specific use permit as presented.
Any questions, concerns? Go ahead.
I move to approve P and Z recommendation for approval of specific use permit as presented second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. Thank you. Item eleven, discussion, any necessary action approving the final reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten regarding the Breckenridge E D C and the Soggy Dog Wine and Brew Performance Agreement.
So this is just the final rating, the second rating. And so with that, I mean. I mean, you guys, I mean, I can go through, but you guys looked at this last.
No question. We'll ask for a motion on that, please.
I move to approve the final reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten as presented.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. Move the item twelve, discussion, any necessary action regarding B E D C recommended approval of a two-year extension of a lease submersible pump, E S P, lease agreement, and performance agreement.
So we've got the E D C Director here tonight to tell you about this, Mike, Michael Harris.
At least first, my pump says five year lease with us and they wanted to extend that lease for two more years. And they've also wanted to adapt the current performance agreements that they had with that pass lease and keeping continuance with that performance agreement. Basically, the performance agreement says that they hire a new employee, they will get five thousand dollars for a full-time benefit authority. So far, I believe they have around twenty-eight full-time individuals. If they hire usually one every year or so, so it doesn't happen that often. But it is an incentive and these are primary jobs within our community. So it does have a good, a larger ripple effect, how it impacts our economy. But that is, is this a first reading or is this a, I mean, a first reading? So anyway, that's any questions I can answer on the E S P.
We're all good on that, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on that?
Move to the first reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. Thank you. Item thirteen, discussion, any action regarding V E D C recommended approval of the R E D I retention incentives.
I'm proud to stand before you regarding R E D I. My understanding is, R E D I has been here since Breckenridge. That's been around a long time and they have employed a lot of folks. And in fact, I was talking to one of our past board members the other day saying that they have, they know somebody, not only who started there, seventeen years ago, and they just hired there at R E D I. These are primary jobs. And publicly, I like to state that these jobs are extremely significant to Breckenridge. If we were to lose these jobs in Breckenridge, it would have a huge impact on our economy. There is no threat of losing these jobs. So we state that clearly. But they do have prospects that want to entertain buying them. And with the passing of Jimmy Dye and kind of recalibrate, kind of get refocused, you can imagine there are a lot of folks that are trying to touch base with them. Their three primary customers are Bell Helicopter, Subaru Bell, which is a subsidiary in Japan, and also Air Tractor out of Austin, Texas. The key here is they need to continue to get more customers. They they have other customers, but they need to continue to get more customers. But at the same time, just like all of our other manufacturers in this community, they need new equipment. They need new software to have to be competitive and they need some help with some marketing. They're not so far in the past. And we understand this old school concept, but doing a really good job of what they do, work will get around and they will get work. Well, the world's changed a little bit. We're gonna do a little business development in that context. So what we were trying to do is help R E D I in enhancing their machinery and equipment and enhancing their software and enhancing the strategic aspect on where they try to do some business development, bring some new people in. And with an evaluation of what they're doing, I felt like that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I forget to our board, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which equates around a two-hundred-dollar job. It's a great benefit for them to use that money to improve their equipment and also improve their software. So anyway, this is our first reading for the Commissioners' review. Again, any questions, be glad to answer those.
I do have a question on that. And you can help me remember the past. It's been a while. Didn't didn't we, as a, as the V E D C and the city, approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than two years ago for R E D I?
I I'm not sure about R E D I, but I know what you did for Ox Manufacturing.
I wanna, and I could be completely wrong on that.
Except with R E D I, it's, my understanding is.
Not, not since I've been here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I may be completely wrong on this, but I thought I remember when when Colton was here in your spot, that we did do a hundred. As a city, we gave him a hundred and fifty towards quick. Now, if I'm wrong on that, please let me know.
I think you hit it. Uh, I'm not sure it was Colton, maybe in his process, but there was a help with them to get a piece of machinery. I I do not, from my research, and I can't find the nod hands, but there, that was, I didn't not, I did not see where that equated to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that piece of equipment. But there has been help with the V E D C in the past, but I think it was prior or prior to. If you, I can get those answers for you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess I run wild. That one's sticking in my head.
But I do know that with Ox Manufacturing.
Yes.
We had done quite a bit with them. It was close to three hundred thousand dollars with their, with their systems. And those are, again, key primary jobs in this community.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely. Any other questions?
I just make a note. I had a friend that worked there and he he retired a few years ago, but at that time, he had been there sixty years. This, this is good for them. This is good for the town. That's the main thing.
Absolutely. And I think this is gonna be the steps in the right direction for them. I'd say you got a rate. Kobe's doing a heck of a job.
Oh, gosh.
With his accounting posts and things and making sure everything's solid.
Yeah, he really, really does. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
Move to approve the first reading of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen as presented.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Thank you. Item fourteen. Item fourteen, discussion any action regarding P E D C recommended approval of T S T C C N N fall semester program.
Do you have the plots of it? I do, I see you're doing the plot. Get your plot to. Yeah.
Well, I'm also proud to see that we're doing some training in this community. What's just really interesting, I, I can't, I kind of came into this, this is already been in the works for some time. But the one thing that I did bring to it, that you see in your agenda, is that we want to scholarship some of these folks. Four thousand dollars for one semester is pretty tough for some folks, and it's tough for the people that we need to upskill in this area. So this is not just for high school or high school-related students. But these are for young adults, older adults are in a career transition. If somebody is interested, and I want to say this clearly, if somebody's working in a job right now that pays eighty, twelve, thirteen dollars an hour, and then you do this training and can walk away with around seventeen or eighteen dollars an hour. That is huge, especially with the different type of environment to work in. The other benefit of a scholarship program is that it's a way in which Toby Dunn and also David Wilcox can sit down with these candidates before they even hire them and see what kind of tenacity they have in fulfilling this program. And so we are killing quite a few birds with this, and so. One thing I did adjust on this agreement is that the E D C, if approved by you, will own the mini-mill machine. And we're going to own it because what we want to do is make sure that when, if the program works. We can maybe do some type of a situation where that mini-mill can be sold to T S T C, but the program doesn't work. Then what we can do is, is get good salvage out of the other piece of equipment. So we want to make sure that we hold on to that asset, and we're maximizing the process of that asset. So in a nutshell, you're looking at around fifty-five, fifty-eight thousand dollars for the mini-mill, and then you're looking at probably around, I believe, I think it's about thirty-two, fifty, thirty-five thousand dollars for the scholarship program. But I think it's going to be a really nice program because not only are we focused on Stevens County, but we're focused on the contiguous counties of Stevens. And as you can imagine, for the folks that manufacture here in Breckenridge, they don't just come from Stevens County, they come from the outside. So if we get the name out that we're aggressive for our manufacturers, and that we want to train folks, and then everybody around this area starts getting that idea. That's going to help us recruit more business in this area. Any questions I can answer? Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion on that?
I move to approve the first res, first reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen as presented.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, thank you. Item fifteen, discussion any necessary action regarding adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Excuse me, a warning and administrative contract for the application preparation administrative services for a two thousand twenty-six Texas park to wild out local park grant.
So mayor and commissioner, as you know, we did apply for this in the last round of funding. Unfortunately, we were not selected to move forward in that, so this is. We still believe that there was a desire for this in the community for splash pad, and so we are moving forward in that process. We did issue an R F P, we only received one submittal, it is from public management, and they have been. They helped us last time, and they've helped us with several other grants, so we do have a lot of experience with them, and they do a good job for the city, so. That's what you have here before tonight, and this is the first step in, again, seeking the grant in this next cycle of grants for this splash pad.
Just got to keep on hitting them.
Yeah.
You know, can't give up.
Eventually, they say, yes. Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, according to administrative grant consultant contract for public management Inc. For the application preparation administration services for twenty twenty-five Texas park and wildlife local park grant by authorized the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second, motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, thank you. Item sixteen, discussion any necessary action regarding resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, appointing a commissioner to service mayor of Pro-Town.
I guess this. Ready.
So every year after the election takes place, it is part of the Texas municipal law that the commissioners are to nominate. Someone to serve as the mayor of Pro-Town. Basically, the mayor of Pro-Town will serve in the place of the mayor if he is not available to be here, still has rights to vote and everything, just like the mayor. But this is between y'all, y'all do, whoever y'all choose to nominate, you will serve until next, for one year, until the next election, and then another mayor from September. So it is up to you guys.
I move to, wait, yeah, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, appointing Greg Acres to serve as mayor of Pro-Town.
I will motion, have seconds? I'll take it. All right, motion and second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed, nice, Larry, you got it. All right, item seventeen, discussion any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, updating the schedule fees. This will be a first reading.
So you have before you the information, and you'll see the changes are in red. Primarily, it is the update for the solid waste, the new solid waste contract that goes into effect. Oh, yes, I was first, yes. And you will see, we haven't updated our fees in quite some time, so I had staff looking at some comparisons. So there is a selected, you'll go through there, and you'll see kind of the comparison of surrounding communities. Of what we're recommending that we increase those fees. Fees aren't necessarily, it's really trying to cover the cost of the administrative work that we do as staff when we process all these different things, so. A lot of these you'll see in the, you'll be permit area. So you, I don't know if you have any questions, but if there are any.
Any questions or concerns?
I have some concerns. And maybe I need clarification on it, so when I read through this. I've got, when I use pots, for example, sorry, but it's, throw you under the bus like I do every meeting. And I'm just going to go from my experience, okay, so one of the things I've always said is our fees are not unreasonable by any means in Breckenridge, Texas, they're not. I've paid a lot more in lots of cities. But we have known, at this point, we haven't really had any enforcement either. And I, I know I could drive down just about any street in Breckenridge on any given day, especially on Saturday, find plenty of places that do not pull permits. As a builder, I have to pull them. Junior is a plumber, I mean, H V C guy, so in, in my practice has always been, no matter what the fee is, we're passing along to the consumer, because it's not me charging the fee, it's the city. But really, if we raise our fees, with the community that's struggling to grow, with challenges of getting developers out here, I've had a conversation for the last two weeks with a big developer out of Metroplex that love Breckenridge, but. They want to know what the challenges are here, so. So it, wouldn't it be better to keep our fees where they're at, be the low guy around here, entertain some of those guys to come spend their money with us, and just enforce what we have, rather than raise a fee?
Well, we are in, I mean, now that we do have more staff on board.
Yes.
We are looking at that, I mean, we're being more proactive and noticing those, you know? So we're already covering that, but what I would tell you is we're, we're, we are low, but even with these updates, we're not, we're not.
Not as high, you know, we're not as high as, so I saw that.
Right, so the only thing is, if we don't, the cost of doing business continues to go up. And so that's employee salary, that's just materials, everything that we use. You know, we were just talking about bank books, deposit books, you know, and how much those cost, you know? So I mean, everything continues to go up, and that is, if we want to continue to keep pace in every area and be able to. And I'm, yeah, I am going to say, continue to give our employees raises. These are, these are some of the things that we have to do, and again, they're not, they haven't gone up a lot if you compare. And we're, they're still not really high, I mean, we're still low, even with these, I think we're still low, we're lower than the surrounding community. So.
I'm pretty good.
Saying.
Wait, I'm sure you guys looked at the numbers, I mean, with these increases, what do you anticipate, or what do we as a city anticipate? This is going to put back to, to be blunt to our bottom line, to be able to do those other things like raises and.
It's really not that much, because the fee wasn't raised that much. I mean, I'm looking at like the mobile home, I think it was fifty, it went up to a hundred. So, and when you look, I mean, I'd have to look at the numbers for this month, like we have the permit, we get that to you every month. You're not talking big dollars, and as you know, I mean, you're, you're a contractor, I mean, you're passing that along, so.
But just like you said, just like you.
Every little bit.
In the city, when we pass along, and anybody else that does this, when we pass along those, we're hearing the same things, like, you know, my cost for metal, lumber, everything has just skyrocketed. And to the point, anytime we have, I'm checking a hundred bucks. It's a fifteen-minute conversation, twenty-minute conversation, and just, so I get it, I'm just trying to figure out, is this, are we where we need to be? Do we need to go to the next one, and is it going to be enough, or are we going to raise these again? Because that, that's a challenge.
We've been raising for five years, so, I mean, it's not like we're coming back to you every year saying, oh, we need to go up. Now, what I would say, I mean, and I'm, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suspect that we'll be back here in a year, but it's just like, and I'll use the water rates, for example. You have to go, what, what we did for a long time is we weren't really keeping up with the cost of doing business for our water.
We were, we were on this.
So when we did the water rate study, excuse me, water rate study, you know, and this happened right before I got here, so you guys all made a decision before I got here, but. There were five proposals presented to you, you guys went with the, you know, the highest one, and it's because of our system being in such dire straits, so. Honestly, the better course of action is just, maybe it's a little bit every so often versus every five years piling up, you know, more, a bigger chunk. Although I say a bigger chunk, it's not hu, it's not a huge amount.
No.
But, I mean, I understand the concern, but we do have with, you know, and I'll point to E D C, you know.
I was just looking for him to figure, he's in the lab.
The House of Sales Tax, you know, that they get to fund, you know, from our sales tax, and, you know, they do a good job in promoting economic development. And so those funds are going to specifically promote this retention and expansion within.
Jay, just ballpark, like, on your, on any average year, what kind of is the permits, like, total revenue? Let's go ahead.
I'd have to look.
Like, I mean, is it tens of thousands or?
Maybe.
Thirty, you said?
I know it's, it's improved.
Fifty, I mean, I'd have to look, I mean, I don't have that.
Yeah, I didn't know, maybe we're in the hundreds or in the thousands.
I was going to say, we also have to outsource certain inspections, which I know we're providing a little bit more for that just because, but that's just what we have to do.
Well, as another example, we do use a third party, we do have, we use a third party for some of our inspections. And so that is just a pass-through, and their fees have increased, so.
So, not to go down that rabbit hole too deep, this could be for another discussion, but do we, so when I first got here, we had Calvin, right, in cattle work. Like so many people in the city wore too many hats at one time, but, you know, plumbing didn't matter, and now we've got top them, I know we've got pots, you know, a lot of the code enforcement as well, but. Do we have anybody in our organization, would it be, is it cheaper, could it be cheaper in our future if we had somebody in our organization that could do those inspections? Versus outsourcing.
In-house, we do, so Malcolm.
We do, I know we do.
Fire chief, he's the building inspector.
Yeah.
And, you know, he was code, and, you know, thank God, we took that off his plate, and we have a full-time. I mean, but those two jobs in and of themselves are still good jobs, so he does do some inspection, but these are primarily plumbing, that the, sorry, does, B D does.
But we don't have anybody in our pipeline that, whatever license that takes, I, again, I don't know what license that takes to be the inspector.
He has some, he has taken some training for that, so yes, he's got experience, are you talking Malcolm?
No, I'm just, do we have anybody in our pipeline? Because Malcolm's going to retire like Stacy, so, again.
Absolutely, yeah, and at that point, I mean, we'll have to look at that, but yes, I mean, I mean.
I'm going to use it because he left, like, you know, Thomas is a person currently, I mean, not saying Thomas is our inspector, but just. Are we looking within our own order, because I'm just trying to figure out, is it cheaper to go within our own organization at some point than outsourcing? Because if we outsource, they're always going to raise their price, I mean, it's going to raise, just like the rest of us have to raise our prices when costs come to it.
We, we're always doing that analysis, commissioner, for sure. I will tell you, we, since I've been here, we've hired one and a half people, and it's hard, and we have so many positions that had been cut in twenty nineteen. That, you know, staff all across the board are crying for, and we don't have funds to do that. I mean, we're, so with the balance of, we've got to bring the pay up, and then we've got to, you know, split the duties out, so we're, you know, increasing our.
One or two hats instead of five or six, like, so many of them worn over many years in Breckenridge, right, yeah, I agree.
But I mean, at this point, yes, the, the more economical way to do it is how we're doing it, Malcolm does some of them, but we're using a third party to do.
Junior, your experience, because you, you work with that third party far more than even I do, so I mean, is there any questions regarding that? Anything you can make out of either?
Well, I know, like, Eastland, two years ago, they didn't enforce code, and they hired a code enforcer, and. Talking to him, they had several people doing, not pulling permits, that was a big sale, he did no pulling permits, then you had handyman doing skilled profession. And like they said, they came in, started fining people, you're building a fence without a permit, now you get a fine. It brought in a lot of money, got everybody fair. You know, like Greg said, if you raise the rates, a lot of people, unless we enforce it, the people are just not going to pull permits.
Well, we are, I, I hear what you're saying, I mean, and we have looked at that, however, that, that's punitive, it is fairly punitive. Now, I'm not saying we, we won't do it, and we can definitely look at that, but we are taking both, we are increasing code enforcement. So we are doing that, but we're asking, you know, we're, we're recommending, I mean, it's up to you guys, but we're recommending, there's got to be a little bit, we haven't had increases for five years, so. I think it's a reasonable increase, but we still absolutely need to be looking at those that are not pulling permits. And we've had those discussions in-house quite a bit. And we are, we are identifying those people. But again, we've got, even this morning, you know, Jay was like, how many cases this month?
That's the month made with a hundred and fifty-two cases.
Hundred and fifty-two, since the first year, it's four hundred?
Since first year, four hundred and ninety-something, with two hundred and something active, and a little over like one ninety compliance, so out of that, so. We're running right now with code, I'm running about a fifty-fifty compliance to, which.
And it is obvious that it's out there, because you can drive down the street and see some of the eyesores, I've even looked at so many years.
Go drive.
And, and plus, I get phone calls, trust me, and, and, oh, and.
But in the meeting, we're talking about, I mean, he was saying, and I need another person.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Person would be great.
And we do, we absolutely do, but he, we are making progress on that hand, too, so I think it's a multi-pronged approach.
Just out of curiosity, you know, I realize we're going kind of deep down this rabbit hole right at this. You know, for example, who is out there checking to go pull per, you know, see if the permit's on the job site? Do, do you see that, like, do you see some structure going on?
Stop and make sure they have a permit and that type of stuff. Sometimes, oh, it's, I send a letter because there's a water heater sitting out front, and it's, it's a rubbish case at that time, unfortunately, you can't catch everyone.
Right, no, and you won't, you're never with.
Well, and I, you know, I talked to Malcolm about that and, and Wes, so, you know, and I know there's other staff that have brought different things, you know, so. You know, we encourage staff to be our eye in the ears out on the street, if you're driving around and you see something, you know, ask Christie. If you're driving around and you see something, you know, ask Christie if it's, you know, have they pulled a permit? So.
I see two guys in trucks all the time. They can help you out. They're always in trucks running around.
No, I have an adult person there. They're pretty busy.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, yeah. No. And again, we're not gonna catch everybody. And I don't mean to be like, hard-nosed and says, hey, if you don't pull a permit, you know? But it's just always been good business practice for me to go, it's just easier to pull that permit and not have a problem. But to be honest, when you talk to people in our community, they don't pull permits because ain't nobody popped them yet. That's really what it boils down to. And, and yes, we do have more code enforcement. Thank you, by the way. Uh, that's a thankless, that's a thankless job right there.
And talking about, in the code enforcer in Eastland, the first job, doing what to do, involved that it was a handyman doing plumbing. So, so they caught himself. The second time he got a fine. Third time he actually went to jail. And he said after that kind of couple of cases, it, everybody in town started, okay, we'll pull the permit.
Well, we can never bring something back.
So because on the, the fractions you're saying that you, you had last month, are they been all, what kind of, what's your high percentage of the fraction you're getting right now?
Well, I mean, you're talking about right now, and they're not just pulling permit cases. There's high grass weed, brush, vehicles. I mean, it's.
And my, and my thing is, there we get into, you got a handyman doing plumbing, getting cross conviction. Now we got a whole ha- a whole town sick.
Yeah.
So is somebody gonna get sick because of high grass? You know, it's, it's not.
There's, there's no, I don't think there's a perfect answer to any of this. It's gonna be just picking at each fart that comes up. I mean, it's a never-ending, it did get, I always say, Breckenridge, it get broken one da- one night. It ain't gonna get fixed in one night.
I have caught not doing, not having permits or like construction stuff, they're building stuff and all that stuff. I've left them a door tag, told them they didn't have, we know they didn't have, and they pulled the permits like the next day, come in and done that. I haven't had anybody really, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'm not gonna catch everybody out there that's inside of a house that I can't tell if they're doing something inside. But at least they're coming compliant with one. I am catching.
Yes.
I'm not having a, a drawback of them coming back a little, you know?
And I know that we've had situations where like on a weekend, you know, again, we can't man this place twenty-seven, it's not possible. Uh, Christie would quit. Um, you know, but the, the, you know, we have weekends, but we've had situations where I'll call Malcolm and just say, hey, look, I did, they want me to do this now. You guys are closed at, you know, three o'clock on a Friday. I'll be in there Monday morning. Is that okay? As long as we have that kind of line of communication or they have a record, I don't know that we have a problem. But it's, it's gonna be, there's no simple solution to this. There's no simple solution. Okay. Um, Cynthia, one of the places to look, just in, in Junior and anybody that does this for a living. Don't look at all the, they're in a permit for nothing over there. It's the wild, wild west. I didn't learn that till recently when I had a guy, I sat in their city hall for an hour going, what about this? No. But, no, you don't need a permit to do anything.
I didn't hear you say.
Albany.
Oh.
Don't, don't bother to you though. It's just a scary little town. Anyway. Um, now, I mean, we, we've got another reading coming on this. If there's questions, I'm sure we can bring them up. So, uh, move to approve the first reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve as presented.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Out of nineteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of Stevens County interlocal agreement to name fire chief Malcolm Buckton as acting Stevens County Fire Memorial.
So this was requested, um, as you know, um, Constable Wayne McCall passed away. He was fire marshal. And so the county has requested this. Um, you know, I did, I will say, I did talk with the judge and I talked with the fire chief. I did have concern because there's no renewed near, moderation for this. Um, a lot of this is things that Malcolm is already involved in. Um, in Malcolm's opinion, it wouldn't, um, require a whole lot of extra work. There would be some, but not a whole lot of extra work. Um, and it is, um, not a permanent thing. It's exactly.
I was gonna say, are they looking for, are they looking, but as a county, are they looking for a fire marshal? Or just filling the void until they find it? Is that?
Yeah, and I don't know what they're doing. I mean, the judge didn't say how long, said it wasn't gonna be, you know, years. But I don't know how long and I don't know what their plans are. You know, they did name a constable. Um, and I don't know if they're gonna try to get him trained. Um, they do have a, uh, part-time gentleman. I say part-time, it's a volunteer position, emergency, um, manager, uh, assisting the judge um, in his capacity as the manager of the county. Um, so I don't know if there's, you know, some efforts with, with that gentleman. Um, I'm just not sure. But, uh, we.
Once again, Wayne's one of those guys that wore mania hats. Mania hats, yeah. Uh, Junior, do you have any take on that? Because I know you're part of the volunteer fire departments. And do you got any insight on that that we might not?
I mean, Malcolm's usually there. So he, he, they, and Wesley's the same way. They deal with in-town, out-town. So they're already involved in there. So. It's, so he's, he'll just be acting as an in-room for now. Uh, and if that person that put as a, as an in-room is somebody who's already given a job during the war, you know, it's.
I mean, it's not, it's act, it's gonna be the acting.
Yeah.
County fire marshal until they, you know, find some, another solution.
Right.
Yeah. And I just don't have a timeframe from what you're gonna be thinking.
So, love this. Any other questions? I'll make this quick. Move to approve Stevens County interlocal agreement naming Malcolm Buckton. And he agreed to this, right?
Right.
Malcolm agreed to this? He didn't hear it, he's standing up right now. As acting Stevens County Fire Marshal as presented.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor?
Uh.
Right. Thank you, guys. We'll go to the executive session, convening to executive session at, uh, five twenty-eight P M. Pursuit to Texas Government Code, Anointed Chapter five fifty-one, Subchapter D, Texas Open Mini Act. The Act, the City Commission will recess into executive session, closed meeting to discuss the following, consultation with attorney, five fifty-one dash O seventy-one. Out of one and two, consultation with an attorney regarding pending or anticipated litigation or a settlement offer or on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Department of Rule of Professional Conduct of the State Bar Texas clearly conducts son, links with this chapter. That's out of nineteen, that's offense contract. So we will go into that at five twenty-eight.
Six twenty-eight, six twenty-eight, man. Oh, six twenty-four. Six twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, six twenty-eight.
Okay.
All right. Re-convene an open session at, uh, seven oh one P M. And, uh, I'll ask for a motion. I make a motion that if offense contract dispute is not resolved by June seventeen, we authorize the city attorney to file a lawsuit. Seven. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is he opposed?
None.
It's all righty.
We have one abstention.
One, okay. I got you. All righty. All right. Um, any member wanna bring up for the next meeting next month? Tonight, you've, you've got several weeks you'd think about it. Something comes up, receiver requests. If not, if not, then at seven oh two P M, we are adjourned.